Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Portage Lakes Joint Vocational School District. Let's call the meeting to order with the roll call.
Okay. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Fouser.
Here.
Mr. Furlong.
Here.
Mr. Hercules.
Here.
Mrs. McGraw.
Here.
Mr. Sponseller.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mr. Jibbinen.
Here.
Okay. We rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags in the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on the basis of liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we have opened the floor to visitors for comments. Does anyone have comments? That's it. We will move then to the report of the Treasurers.
Item number one. Recommend approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21, 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was Mr. Campbell? Oh, Mr. Hofer.
Okay.
Go ahead and call the roll.
All righty. Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Upstate.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Okay. Item number two. Recommend approval of the financial reports, check register, bank reconciliation, quarterly investment report, and comparative financial report for the month of March 2024 as presented, subject to audit.
So moved. Mr. Campbell? Mr. Fouser? Mr. Campbell? And the motion is Mr. Fouser? Call the rolls.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number three. Recommend approval of attachment, attached amendments to the fiscal 2024 fund level appropriations as presented.
Mrs. McGraw? In a second. Do you have a second? Oh, there is Mr. Furlong.
Mr. McGraw? First.
And Mr. Furlong is the second.
Okay.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Item number four. Recommend approval of the donation to the patrician of Covargo Excellence in Nursing Scholarship in amount of $1,000.
So moved. Second. Mr. Sponseller and Mr. Cohen?
Okay.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes the Treasurer's section.
Thank you. We will then proceed to the Report of the Treasurers presented.
Okay. We'll call it Mr. Clark.
Evening, everyone. First, I want to thank in front of the board Cohart's Ms. Trippney and Ms. Saly for putting up with me being out for getting my hip replaced. So I got back as fast as I could, but they really held the fort, so thank you, guys. Things are rolling at the school, so like nothing changed. So with technology, it was great to be able to stay day-to-day with the school, but uniform fittings happening out there, it's a buzz. Love the questions that I'm hearing from the incoming students, so hard to believe it's already happening. So, but that's not why you're here, you're here for Students of the Month. Thank you for showing up, young ladies. Our gentlemen did not show up tonight, and that's okay, but I want to introduce their names. Travis Howe, 11th grader, welding from Green. Nice long paragraph from Mr. Mariana for him. Kayden Swain, and this happened to two individuals, and it very rarely happens that I get recommendations coming from two separate teachers. So it's happened twice. So Ms. Wiegant and Ms. Forrest both nominated Kayden Swain, 11th grader from Manchester in the electrical program. Unfortunately, they couldn't attend tonight. But Tony Venom was able to attend, so go ahead and stand up for us, Tony. Tony's in our culinary program, also a junior from Springfield. And Ms. Lewis, her lab instructor nominated her. And it's funny because Ms. Lewis, if you don't know her, she's just kind of a very quiet, calm individual, and she come down and she's like, "I would like, can you add like some more stuff?" I don't, I can't, I want to say so much good about her, and I don't know what to say, I don't know what else to add and not sound dumb. I'm like, "We'll take care of it, it'll be fine." But in her words, "Tony comes to school every day with a positive attitude, is eager to learn and help with anything and everything that needs done. Tony is a go-getter and is always there to offer a helping hand to absolutely anyone." These are the types of attitudes that we need in our industry. So that's very, I thought she did good. A little bit about Tony, she enjoys dance, golf, kayaking. Her favorite TV show is Stranger Things because she loves the storyline and the plot. If she could travel anywhere in the world, she would love to visit Paris. And to be an animal, she would be a dog because they get lots of attention and run wherever they want all day. And if she was stuck on an island, it was supposed to be one person, but that's okay, she listed her whole gaggle of friends because they all get along. Congratulations.
We have a... Thank you. And Taylor made it this evening. Go ahead and stand up for us, Taylor. Thank you for taking time.
Taylor is a Coventry student of ours, also a junior in the sports med program, and was nominated by Mr. Hoover, or Ms. Hoover and Mr. Paranod, and then was backed up by her lab instructor. So, good job. Taylor is a motivated student who is always willing to learn and to be present in class. Taylor is a quiet leader who is motivated to learn, to help others. Taylor is an active listener and is always aware of the people around her. Taylor consistently exhibits a remarkable level of humility that is truly inspiring. I believe that Taylor would be an exceptional candidate for the Student of the Month. She embodies the values and the expectations that we hold here at PLCC. So very nice words, though. Taylor enjoys working out and learning about nature. Her favorite movie is called Nobody with, is it Odenkirk? Odenkirk, okay. She enjoys the intense fight scenes, right? I look like a fighter, but we'll just, if you could travel anywhere in the world, where would it be? I would love to travel to Greece. I think it's pretty cool there. If you could be an animal for a day, what would you like to be? I would like to be an owl. I'd love to fly, and I need really good vision. If you were stuck on a desert island, who would you want to be with? With her friend Riley, because she knows about camping. Very good. Congratulations, girls. So those of you that came for the most exciting portion of the evening, which was what just happened, if you guys would like to leave, you may, or if you'd like to stick around and enjoy the rest of the communication, you can do that as well. You have that choice.
Thank you, Mrs. Householder. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have Ms. Amy Ible speaking to us on the Design Communications and Marketing Program and some of the things that are happening there.
I'm going to be fast, I promise. Okay. Let you take one and pass it down, there's three stacks.
Okay, I'm not going to go over all that.
Those are like fun things you can look at later when you're bored. So I teach the Design Communication and Marketing Program here. This is my second year at the PLCC, and I just wanted to share some of our students' accomplishments and some of the things that we have going on with our program. From our class of 2024, that is just about to graduate here, we have a really outstanding and talented group, several students who have some big accomplishments. We have a student that won top 25 at the Governor's Youth Art Awards last year, and we have a young lady who won a gold key for her entire portfolio of photography at the Regional Scholastic Art Awards. The National Scholastic Art Awards will be taking place in June. Usually that happens in the spring, but the adjudication got moved back for a long story that you don't want to hear about. And so I'm excited to see how they do. We have several students that advanced to the national competition, so fingers crossed. One of the pages that you have is a list of scholarships that our class of 2024 in the DCM program has received. This week, we leveled over $800,000 in scholarship awards for faculty students. So they are amazing. And another, the other little chart that you receive are a list of like firmed-up plans. So we have all but just a couple students who are still making decisions, but the ones who have made decisions, I've given you a little list of what are their plans, what are they going to go do? Because I think it's pretty exciting, some of the different things that they're going to go pursue. The thicker, like stapled packet is the program from our Regional Scholastic Art Awards Ceremony. It takes place at Kent Stark every year over the wintertime. Just so you can kind of see for comparison, some of the other schools that participate. It's, our region's Summit Stark, Wayne Medina, Portage, Tusporous, Holmes, and Carroll Counties. Typically, somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 entries are submitted. It's for grades seven through 12. It's an absolutely extraordinary opportunity for students to be part of an authentic juried art competition, and it's a wonderful exhibition of work at Kent Stark, and it's an awesome opportunity for students to get scholarships and gain college admission. So if you haven't seen some of our work, we have a really nice display here in the main hallway, and in the display cases in the main hallway, you'll see some of our students' senior portfolio work. So that's worth checking out. And lastly, the junior class for DCM is also a pretty amazing group, and I'm rather geeked about them. They have taken a lot of interesting initiatives this year, including they decided to produce a game show for the PLCC called the PLCC Showdown as a sort of reward activity in conjunction with our PBIS efforts here at school. And so they produced their first two episodes, and they are in the process of editing the film and audio from that right now. And I'm really, really excited to see what they come up with next year. Putting that out there as a plug, because this is a group of students that are ready to do great design and communication and marketing work. So if you know anybody that could use a little bit of assistance, photography, film, videography, editing, design, give us a shout, because it's great work-based learning. And last thing, I will echo Mr. Clark's comments. This place, it is a testament to the leadership in this building that we can have within two years, one administrator have her appendix removed suddenly, and another administrator throw their back out all of a sudden, and then another one need a new large joint. And you really, like, this place didn't even flinch. And that doesn't happen without people who really work together as a team, and that is a testament to the way this place runs. And this is not my first rodeo in education, and that is not commonplace. So while I know that it's awesome here, I hope that you all realize like what an amazing place this is. So, okay, thanks.
Lisa?
Thank you, Amy.
If I could just add, I have three of Amy's students as interns for work-based learning, and we've worked with them throughout the course of this year, and they have helped us tremendously, and they are really amazing students. I have Delaney, Bobby, and Dylan, and I couldn't be more grateful for them, and I'm sorry to see them go, but I'm excited to renew that relationship with three more juniors. So she does great things in that classroom. I'll just give you a quick adult ed update. We are currently on par to graduate 195 students throughout the course of this year. I really wanted to get to 200, but much like my weight loss goals for the year, I have fallen far short of that, but I will take it. So currently, I'm at 195. I'm pretty darn happy with that, so I will try for 200, to break 200 next year. It's a new goal. This year, I believe I've told you already, but we have added two full-time programs. We've added dental assisting, and we've added hair design. In dental assisting, we already have five, it's only the end of April. Most people don't even think about us until about June, so that is very good news. And we already have four in our hair design, so I'm tickled with that. Next week, we are finalizing our full NIMS accreditation, and so we'll have one of the onsite visits there. In our CNC NIMS mill operations and CNC lathe operations, we have one student enrolled in both of those already, which is really reassuring because manufacturing frankly is a very hard sell. So we're very excited about that. Our dispatch class that we started this year has three already for next year, so we're really hopeful that some of the new initiatives that we've started will really start taking off next year. And then, of course, our HVAC, our welding, our cosmetology programs, they are just nailing it. So we are A-OK there. In fact, we are full on most of our cosmetology. Our HVAC is only four away from being full. Our welding has eight left, so we're looking pretty good. We're going to continue moving forward, and hopefully next year I can stand here and say that we're over 200. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We'll dive in. Item number two is recommended that the Board approve the resignation effective at the close of business May 30, 2024, and separation agreement of Margaret Johnson and our Adult Ed Practical Nursing Coordinator.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Item number three. We have employment contracts. We have our three top administrative contracts from Mr. Clark, Mrs. Saly, and Lisa Trippney who are here. Exempt confidential employee contract for the Treasurer's Office and support staff Tyler Palmer, custodian for this year, and I'd like to point out that he's a Manchester grad and a PLCC grad as well, so we're very excited to have him on board with us, and is recommended that the Board approve the employment contracts listed above.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Okay. My last item is the GMP amendment. I'm recommending that you approve the GMP, that's the gross maximum price that we can be charged to the CMR agreement with shook construction for the capital improvement projects.
So moved. Second.
None of that changed. I mean, it's all what we anticipated, we're just approving.
Exactly. Not a penny of...
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. That concludes the Report of the Treasurers presented, and we will move on to new business. Anyone have new business?
Any update on the, on the search?
I was going to put that in informal, but yeah.
Okay.
No problem, I can certainly do.
I guess continue with business.
Actually, we'll throw Dave a curveball going into members informal, I'll start, and we'll move to the other way. So, to give a quick update, actually, I just got off the phone with the folks from Finding Leaders. They have, they've expanded their search, obviously statewide and nationally. We have a solid base of applicants so far. They expect us to have anywhere from eight to 10 by the time that's all said and done. Right now, the largest portion of the group is, they're all sitting Treasurers in other districts, so that's a, that's an interesting side note to all this, without disclosing too much, but it seems to be going well, we seem to be on schedule, and they don't, at this point, don't anticipate any issues. They were at the...
OASPA.
Thank you. Conference this week, so a lot of conversations happened there as well. So they, folks know who they are and what they're looking for, so they've had, they expect to get some more applicants from that, from that visit as well.
And that, and that window closes?
May 3rd.
May 3rd?
May 3rd, yeah. We've got another couple weeks.
Two weeks, two more weeks.
So do we expect a different meeting other than May 16th, or do we have another schedule that we need to...
At this point, we don't, but we could, so I'll keep everybody posted. It's when they close that, it just really depends on where they are in the number and quality of applicants in the screening process at that point. So we should be, because we're looking to start those, those interviews that last part of May, so we should be, or the mid, middle of May, I should say.
So we're going to finish up at the end of May, right? Is that, or is that the timeline that I saw?
Yes.
Yeah. Have it here.
Yep. That was it for me.
Okay. Update from Columbus, there's not a whole lot going on, except the capital budget. They're proposing for the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission another 700 million, so there will be some schools that will be able to take that. Joint Committee on Property Tax Reform, they're discussing the 20 mil floor levies, cash balances, and how absenteeism is impacting local funding, among other topics. And then, House Bill 447 would modify and expand property tax. Homestead exemptions would gradually reduce school districts' 20 mil floor and would modify the formula for determining farmland and current agricultural use. Stay tuned. Congratulations to you three. You're back on for another three years. Happy. Great report. Tie into the teacher, Amy, there, maybe sometime next year, when they do this podcast and get this up, we can have a presentation here. That would be wonderful, see the fruits of students' labor. And maybe we can add the dates that are important, like we always do at our, our schoolwork, on the bottom of the agenda, so that we can all see that, and that can be broadcast out all at one time. I'm done.
Great. Congratulations to the Students of the Month. Mr. Clark, I'm glad your hip is acting the way it should, and Mr. Redmond, glad to see you back and upright and smiling rather than grimacing every time. William, thank you for stepping up and letting everything we were hearing, you're doing a great job, so we appreciate that, especially during the long time of change, no one likes change, so thank you for being a part of this game.
Thank you.
Stepping up to the plate, being a part of the team. It's exciting to see the new construction going on and a lot of great things happening. It's like every, every month, it's just another wonderful report from adult ed, from those of us who've been around for a while, it's truly risen from the ashes, I believe. And so it's, it's been, it's been great, and I don't know if it's the, if the weight goal is 200, or 195, I got a little confused on that, but I'm thinking that, you know, it's like, unless you're holding somebody else on your shoulders, I think that's going to be a hard goal to make, so it's awesome that we're almost there, and congratulations, it's a great job. Mr. Fouser?
The House Bill 447, who's your number?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Light reading on that one, as, thank you, Amy, for the light reading, casual reading. 195 is a nice number. I know, you always, you always want the extra inch. Sure, of course. Mr., what do they call it, a large joint replacement?
Large joints.
Anyway, it's nice to see you back again.
It's great to be here, and good to see Mrs. Redmond healthy and looking good, and same with you with your surgery. I just want to thank the, all the staff and all the, all the teachers for the opportunity of these students to, to really broaden their future, I mean, the life they have ahead of them, this opportunity here is just, it's just fantastic. And if you're a student going to school here, you get so much opportunity to, to have a happy life. Thank all of you.
I would just echo that, just they get it, they get so much further ahead, just starting out, they're just so much further ahead, so I just thank you for that. I'm just super excited to hear the chatter outside when I was walking in, and they're like, "Oh, no, 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 no." How exciting, it's just kind of like a vibe of the place, so good job, thank you so much.
I had to park like a mile away. Amy, you brought up how well this place ran throughout, you know, three major health issues. You left off one more that was last year, but I just wonder if we need to warn the new Treasurer how dangerous it is. Catching you all back.
We're done.
And it's always good to see the students, Students of the Month. I love your report, how you give it, the freedom you give them to tell us a little something about themselves, more than they probably know they're revealing, but it's interesting.
My favorite part about Students of the Month is when you see the parents' face, like, they're like, "Oh, you do that at school?" But it's always nice to see that reward from being a parent. The phlebotomy class, I thought that was really cool, you know, the eight students that, first time around, and I saw the two welding students already have jobs lined up from the high school class, which is great, and then my daughter's looking forward to the May 3 prompt, right? May 3?
Yeah, May 3, yeah.
That's all my daughter's going.
Thank you. Mrs. Trippney, are you the one that lost the appendix?
I did, last year.
You know what, you didn't need it.
That's your weight.
And Mrs. Redmond, great, I don't know if I mentioned this last month, great to see you up right. And I'm sorry, you know, of all the...
Yes.
It's no fun.
Thank you.
And Mr. Clark, may your new hip treat you better than it always has.
It already is.
I also just wanted to very quickly mention, you know, I'm really excited to see this art award report. I think, you know, there's a culture, I think in our country, where thought leaders and policymakers are so hyper-focused on STEM all the time, that we forget about the arts and music, and how incredibly important that is to developing the whole person, especially those students that really need that and need that expression. And there's been a lot of research on how important the arts are, and so I'm, and, you know, I have a big advocate of steam, you've got to add the A in there, you've got to add the R's in there, and I'm just really gratified that we're, we're clearly doing that, and we're doing something right here. And I hope other districts follow suit. uh, and I hope other districts follow suit, so, thank you.
Could I add one thing? Mr. Cohen is, um, works at University of Akron, and I know that we had an exciting news for one of your students, Amy, and I'd like for you... Okay, I'd like for you to share that little story real quickly.
Yeah, so, um, one of our, um, seniors who is a young lady, she's going to go to the minor school, Harz, um, and she is our, also, she's our key portfolio winner for her photography, she was invited, um, to be the official football team photographer for Akron U, starting to share as an incoming freshman, so, that's, that's been really great, she went to her first football practice last Saturday, she's going to another practice this Saturday, and got invited to the spring game, their current photographer is graduating, so this gives her a chance to kind of learn the ropes, she is super excited, she's going to do wonderful, like, she's so talented and amazing, so...
I'm guessing it's pretty rare for an incoming freshman.
Yeah, I would know that that, I mean, I, I don't know that I can really say, but I think that's pretty rare for her, so, yeah.
Really cool.
And taking sports photography is not the same as like portrait photography, like, to take sports photography is like a whole nother level of...
Yes.
You got to pay attention.
Michelle, yes. She, she has worked, she's incredibly hard to, like, just get better, like, every day, every week, for the last two years, so, she's incredible.
I got to say, I'm a little jealous, too, because back, uh, you know, another lifetime ago, I wanted to be a sports photographer, so, uh...
We know people that are working down there now that get you an in, though.
That's true. All right. Well, with that, I feel, I feel as though we've gotten through everything here, so, uh, the next meeting will be Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 PM here, um, and with that, we'll take a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mrs. McGraw?
Say.
Yep, and we'll call the roll.
Um, Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Sponseller?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jibbinen?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 6:30.